Morning. This is our information sharing session, which we host once a quarter. We usually highlight presentations from community organizations outside collaboration partners during this particular session. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones. And if you wish to address the board, we don't have public comment today because it's information sharing. So that is not relevant. I would like to remind you, though, that if you're presenting to the board today, the microphones are on when the little red ring around the top blows red. And you need to push the button on the base in order to turn it on. The mics are also fairly sensitive, so you need to have it relatively close to you in order for the sound to pick up. So with that, I'm Zan Ojero, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Rachel McInney, County Administrator.
And we typically do introductions in the room, so I'm going to start over here in the front with Peggy McGuire. And online?
Good morning. Jeff N. Arstal, Benton County Sheriff.
Thank you all. Much appreciate that. Are there any announcements for the good of the order? Go ahead.
I have one. I've got a schedule conflict, and so I will be leaving the meeting early today.
And are there any, thank you for that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. We do have an executive session noted on the agenda, but we don't have that confirmed yet, correct? So we will be confirming that as we move along. Next, we'll move into our work session, and the first item is our presentation from Shannon Rose for 211 Services in Benton County.
Okay. I was looking down low for the thing. So hi, my name is Shannon Rose. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator with 211 Info. I cover Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. I have been with 211 for about five and a half years. I uploaded or I shared all of the slides. I don't plan on going through each one in detail. If there's something that I skip over, please let me know, and I can go back if it's something you want to hear. So 211 Info helps to empower communities by helping people identify, navigate, and connect with local resources that they need. 211 Info is a nonprofit that covers Oregon and Northwest Washington. 211 in general is a nonprofit that covers the entire country. All 50 states have 211. Ninety-five percent of the population is able to contact 211 from where they are and find information about resources. This is kind of where 211 falls in all of those three-digit dialing. And this one I'll go, I'll kind of skip, but just kind of where we would fall with the other emergency services that are out there. So why would somebody use 211? We are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. People can connect with a live individual to find information about resources in their own community. We have bilingual staff. Right now, we have staff that speaks in addition to Spanish. We have Hungarian, Chukies, and Samoan. If we don't have somebody available to speak one language, if somebody calls, we have access to different tele interpreter services. So we can talk with anybody with any of the languages that are spoken in our area. All of our staff are trauma-informed, have been trained and trauma-informed. They have about four weeks of training before they are able to take phone calls. We want to make sure that we're able to communicate with people in a kind, empathetic manner to help them find the resources that they need. Here's kind of our funding source. So we are a nonprofit. Most of our funding comes through state and local government through contracts for specific services. We have some contracts through health care and other agencies to provide specific services, and we do get some grants and donations. These are the ways that people can connect with 211. As you notice, they can dial those three digits, just 211. Occasionally, that doesn't work for people. That's when they can use that 866 number. They can text their zip code to 898-211. They can email. They can use our website. And they can also download our phone app. You want to make sure that if you're looking for Oregon information, that you're including the info on the end. That's how you're getting to the Oregon site. These are kind of our departments. We could talk a little bit about each one of those in a moment. And here are some of our programs. Not all of them are available in every county. One specific would be our Housing and Shelter. Obviously, if somebody calls us, we're going to look for resources. Housing and Shelter, there are some counties that offer specialty programs, which is a little different than just our regular 211. We do have a childcare line. This is a separate line. People that take the calls on the general 211 line do not take the calls for the childcare line. We can help parents find childcare. We can help them understand what to look for in quality childcare. They're interviewing people, and those are not skills that everybody has. We want to make sure that the parents are enabled to have those, that knowledge, so they can find the best childcare for their child, their family. We can help them look if they live in Corvallis and they work in Salem. We can look for childcare along that route. Maybe somebody needs alternative hours. They need night care, or they need a specific language. We can help them look for those things. We do have a maternal and childcare care line that can help parents connect with those kind of resources that are specific for that. We want to make sure that they're feeling supported. If somebody calls us and they're looking for diapers, they might be eligible for other programs that they are not aware of. And by having the specialty team, we can make sure that that team is fully knowledgeable, all the things that are available for families. We do have somebody trained specifically to assist people with SNAP. She can help them understand if they've gotten a letter that they don't understand. She can connect them with SNAP if it's taking a little bit of time to get a hold of them. She can help them by translating some of the documents for them. We do have a resource parent or foster parent support, so that families that have foster children are able to have additional support. This could be behavioral support. It could also be helping to connect a resource parent with a caseworker if it's an after-hours or an emergency thing, they haven't been able to get a hold of somebody. Seasonal programs. So we're coming up on Thanksgiving time, our winter holidays. Sometimes people don't know where to turn and where they can look for resources. And they can call 211 and find out that information. During tax season, we just head back to school. People were able to call 211, find out where they could get backpacks for their kiddos. The Coordination Center is a specialty contract that we have that started out with Kaiser. It can provide light case management for individuals. So if somebody is referred to this line, they get a little more extra help in navigating resources. So you have somebody who needs that extra little bit of handholding. Maybe it could be something as simple as maybe they are looking for rental assistance. This can help them a little bit more in guiding them and reconnecting with them after that initial call. Maybe they'll call back again in the three days. Maybe they see their rental assistance program has opened up that wasn't there before, and they can reconnect. So it's just a little bit of extra support. Disaster services. As we all know, there's been a lot of changing things going on with environment, and we had COVID. 211, if activated by either the state or the county, potentially the city, can provide the non-emergency information during an emergency situation. So when we had those fires in 2020, people were able to call 211 and find out whether or not they were in an evacuation zone. So they didn't need to call 911 and tie up those lines with something that could be handled by somebody who isn't a trained emergency professional. We have been activated sometimes when there has been measles outbreaks or when Salem has had boil water notices. So we can provide that kind of information to folks. We have a large staff. We have about 150 people that are trained at 211. So we can very quickly get the information out to folks. We have a resource database. In Benton County, there are 58 active agencies. This could be anything from the city of Corvallis to COI to Philomath Community Services. So it can be a wide-range thing. It does not include any of the childcare providers that are located in this area. We request that all agencies update with us at least once a year. We will follow up with them if they haven't gotten back with us in that time. Complete with, if need be, I will go in person so that we can make sure that the information that we're giving out is up to date. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody has to wait or that an agency has to wait for that one year to update us. When the food pantry that's in South Corvallis changed their hours, we saw it on Facebook. We reached out to them to verify, yes, these are the new hours. We updated it. It took less than a day, and all the information was updated. So that's different than those printed guides, which some of us still like to hold. I personally, I like paper. The digital thing, I still, I want the paper. But if I was using that food pantry and was relying on a printed guide, the information would have been out of date for me. We have our outreach team, so I'm one of them. We have nine of us now located throughout the state. The community engagement coordinators can give presentations like this one. We can go in person to meetings or virtual. We can do tabling events. We go in person to agencies, and we're always looking for new resources. I think the data and the reporting is rather interesting. So if you were curious how many people in Corvallis were calling 211 or contacting 211 looking for food assistance, you'd be able to look on our website and see one year's worth of data. If you needed further information, maybe you wanted to know for a specific subcode, or you wanted to compare data from 2024 to 202018, you could contact me, and we can get you that data. So you'd be able to look at something as an ongoing thing. On the data page, you are also able to see what the top needs were for each month, how many people had looked for childcare, and potentially what was unmet needs. That would be a need that somebody called us up, and we didn't have a program to refer them to. Now, just because we refer somebody to a program, in particular something like rent, it doesn't mean that there necessarily is rental assistance available. We don't track that, but we always encourage people to call us back. So an unmet need would be something where somebody called us up, maybe for a gas card. That tends to be a popular one. And we didn't have an agency that we could refer them to. These were our top needs for 2023 statewide. And the total contacts, so those were the individuals, and then the top identified needs. So if you are interested, that is a feedback thing. It's also, obviously, you have the slides. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a sense for what, whether the needs in Benton County in terms of top five parallel those at the state level?
The top one is always rent. It's nationwide, it's always rent. And then from there, it can change. A lot of, in general, it typically is a utility, food, and then healthcare. And then each month, it kind of changes which one. So I don't know offhand what it was this time, but it's going to be one of those, those three as the second and the third.
Thank you.
I just have some questions. I'm on your website. How do we access the data for Benton County?
If you go to the data link, which is up at the top, and then you're going to, it says something like data dashboard, which is going to pull up a Tableau site?
I'll play around with it in a little while, so yeah.
Go ahead and email me if you're struggling to find the information. Just let me know, and I can walk you through it.
When you see a trend change in your organization, how do you interact with folks like us in county government when we see an uptick in, say, rental issues or housing issues?
I am not sure if we have a direct contact that would do that. We, you know, as a community engagement coordinator, if I am seeing something like that, and I'm in a meeting, say, a part meeting with Dina back there, I could potentially say, hey, you know, we're noticing that we're getting a lot of calls for rental assistance. And we did notice some of that. I know back, you know, in 2020 and 2021, when there was such an increase in food pantry use. And I had people that were working in the food pantries, and they were letting me know about this increase. And then I was sharing it both with external partners and with 211 and saying, hey, this is what we're really seeing and what people on the ground are experiencing.
Thank you.
And you also participate in the monthly call with service providers, homelessness service providers, correct?
Yep.
So I know that you share, you share what you're seeing with that group as well.
If I am noticing something that is unusual, yes, I could.
Yeah, we're at this point very much looking for this kind of data so that we can target our own services best possible. So that's the questions.
Yeah, no problem. That's why I'm here.
Can you go back to page nine quickly? It's what is 211?
Yep, what is 211? The one with the 91?
One, maybe one more? There you go.
Yes.
I've never seen that list. And we have a 911 service district. And maybe a little more than a year ago, they changed the suicide hotline to a three-digit number, 988. But this is really helpful. I didn't know all of these.
I hear that very often when I'm giving presentations. People are surprised to hear that there are so many different of those three-digit dialing numbers. All of those are assigned through the FCC, and so they are nationwide information numbers.
It's, I think, really helpful to list them all in one place and very different functions for the most part, but a similar way to make the contact. So thank you for organizing, organizing that, even though you're only one of nine.
Well, thank you, Shannon, for coming today and presenting this to us. Lots of good information here. And as someone who myself has struggled with, you know, utilities and rent and healthcare in this county, it's near and dear to my heart. Question for you. So when it comes to, you said it's kind of an all-in-one information place. So for example, our, does our sheriff's department emergency management, do they, they know to send information to you guys, or how does that work?
Yeah. So some, some agencies have a memorandum of understanding, and they are, they know that they're going to contact us. Back in 2019, I know that Benton County was, did have that. That's the last time I heard about it. There is a specialty emergency management team. During, at the change of each weather pattern, the, they have been very good at letting me know that the website, that the Benton County website is up to date and ready to go, so that we can make sure to share that information. I would assume that if there was an emergency situation, I would probably hear the same thing.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is it accurate to describe your organization as a clearinghouse?
Clearinghouse for information.
You seem to be in the center and of, like a wheel spokes and
Yeah, we're there to get out the information, you know. And during a typical day, the information might be about utility assistance or rent assistance. But we're here to provide information during all different sorts of situations. When we had the solar eclipse, that used to be our big call number. We were the state's information line for solar eclipse, so where people go to see it. Well, what traffic lines might be open still, all of that kind of thing. So, yep, we're here to provide any kind of information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And I see you everywhere, so I know that you truly do get out and around and care about all of our communities. Really appreciate it. It's a great, great support.
Thank you very much. You all have a good rest of your day.
Okay, next, invite Peggy McGuire and her colleagues, Dina and Liesel up to the table.
Good morning, folks. Peggy McGuire, Executive Director of Community Services Consortium. And I have with me Dina Eldridge, our Housing Senior Operations Manager, and Liesel Eckert, our Housing Services Manager. And you may remember sometime in the past, I was here talking to you about the effort to separate our tri-county region from the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. HUD designated continuum of care for 26 different counties in Oregon and form our own continuum of care for our three counties. And now we've gone down that path. We've been assigned a technical assistance provider by HUD and started some work. I recently had a meeting that some of you attended. And we were meeting with the folks from the Corvallis, excuse me, the Coordinated Homeless Response Office, the CROW, and HOPE, House, Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Group, that are, fall under the purview of the Health Department, and their peers from Lincoln and Lynn Counties. And we gave a little update as to where we are now, where we see ourselves going in the future on this path, and of some of the information that's been provided by the technical assistance providers. And so I was encouraged by Commissioner Ojero to come and update everybody else about this topic. And I brought the experts with me. I started us down this path and handed this off to Dina and Liesel, and they're doing all the hard work. And they're working directly with our HUD technical assistance providers. So Liesel, I believe, is going to give us a bit of a presentation on this topic this morning. And Dina, as I like to tell everyone, has forgotten more about this than I ever knew. So she's here to ask any questions that I can't handle or that Liesel may wish to defer to her.
Can you hear me okay? You might need to bring it up just a little closer. Okay, how's that? Good, okay. So again, I'm Liesel Eckert, Housing Services Manager with CSC. I'm going to just go over our timeline that we have for, basically, starting when I started in June. And our, our ultimate goal is to be able to apply for HUD COC funds in June of 2026. So continuum of care funding went from an annual application to a two-year application. So they've just completed an application in 2024, and we'll be opening that process again in 2026. So our aim is to become our own continuum of care by a midpoint and then be able to apply in the spring or summer or fall, or whenever HUD releases that application competition information. So, so I have up here as kind of our major milestones for HUD. We're in the process right now of establishing a COC, starting prior to me being here. Peggy and CSC had done a lot of work, but I'm starting it from when I started my staff position, hoping to be a HUD-approved continuum of care for the tri-county region by the end of June 2025. Our reasons for choosing that date were that the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care is making some changes to their processes and practices, and we thought it would be maybe the cleanest for us to separate from them rather than having to kind of take on those new practices in sort of a halfway manner as we're making our way out. So we're hoping to sort of time it when those changes happen. And then our, obviously, our goal there is to be an established COC and ready to apply for those funds by the summer of 2026.
Liesel, can I interrupt you for just a sec? And perhaps ask you to give an overview of what a continuum of care is?
Yeah.
And why it matters?
Yes.
Why we're interested in separating from the rural continuum?
Yes. So a continuum of care is a cross-sector planning group that that is, um, focused on housing and homelessness, um, in the area. It is, uh, a regulated body, regulated by HUD in order for you to be able to apply for federal HUD homelessness funding. Um, so we're following the regulations that HUD requires. Um, but also it creates this, uh, regional body then that is, uh, making a coordinated effort to evaluate our housing service system. So that's not necessarily just our HUD-funded, um, system, but the whole system. How do people come into services? Um, how do we do a better job of coordinating that? Um, how do people then get connected to services? How do we prioritize the most in need? Um, and, uh, and then how, how do we address homelessness and housing issues on a broader level as a region? So there are some specific things that have to be done to meet the HUD regulations for that. But it also creates a body that, um, allows for better regional coordination. Um, and we meet the regulations to be able to apply for that federal funding to bring additional funds. Um, right now, being part of the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, that is a 26-county body, uh, with a variety of capacities across the state, um, which means you kind of have to be, apply for funds to meet the abilities of maybe other places that, uh, don't have as many services or as much capacity as our region does. And so they may make the decision, for example, we don't really have the ability to oversee these youth federal funds. And so at the Rock will say, we don't want to apply for that. Whereas our region may be competitive enough or have enough services that we could as a tri-county area, apply for those federal youth, um, funds. Am I missing anything? That's, okay. Um, so the idea is to have that coordinated effort, have more control of our, our data, to have local support of our data. Right now, the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care is understaffed for supporting 26 counties. Um, and so we really want to have more local control of that as well and be able to, um, support our data story and help people, uh, utilize data, um, more efficiently. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so right now we're in the process, we have a, a steering committee who is from, uh, representative of the tri-county area, some, um, uh, service providers that cover the full tri-county area and then some that are specific to the various counties. Um, we have some people from the Benton County Health Department that are part of that group. Um, and also Corvallis Housing First from this region. And they are developing, uh, the governance charter, uh, making some decisions about what is the board going to look like? How often are we going to meet? How is this all going to kind of work? Who's going to do what? Um, according to the responsibilities that are sort of outlined by HUD and any added responsibilities that we want to add as for our region. So our hope is that they will have a draft completed, um, by the end of this year. And we will have to have a larger membership meeting to get approval of that draft. So the idea always is that this large sort of broad membership, which would be a cross-sector group of people that would be, who are interested in housing and homelessness. So healthcare, um, providers, housing service, um, providers, people with lived experience of homelessness, uh, s- school employees, um, you know, law enforcement, a wide variety of people who would be part of that COC member group, um, would be coming together to have conversations and would approve that governance charter and say, we're okay. This is how we want to kind of run things, um, going forward. So we have, uh, the governance charter is a big piece of that. And then we have, um, some other things that we need to be able to document our ability to, um, run reporting through the homeless management information system, which is the database system. Um, and we need to write out our coordinated, uh, entry process, which is how people are assessed with a common, uh, assessment tool and, um, enter the service system. And so we have to outline what that looks like to HUD. Our hope is to, um, give that to HUD by the spring. Um, everything that they need to document that we can become an independent continuum of care. And we're, then we're hoping that by June, um, of 2025, they will approve us. And then just looking at the next year is the work that we will need to do to be prepared for, um, applying and the work of actually becoming a continuum of care. So that's the development of our board, starting to have board meetings, the development of our committees, um, meeting the deadlines that HUD puts out there for the application process. And then also building capacity in the community to prepare people to apply for HUD funding. Um, right now, we only have, uh, two organizations that receive a continuum of care grant through the Rock. Um, and our hope would be that that would be a broader application for more people in the community. But you definitely have to have some things in place, um, to be prepared to accept federal funding and be ready for that. This is just a quick, uh, review to just see the sort of component parts that HUD asks us to have. Um, and this is what the steering committee is working on in terms of figuring out how these are going to sort of work together. So you have the COC membership, which is made up of those cross-sector, uh, various people who are interested in housing and homelessness. You have some work committees that help do some of the work, um, of that. You have an elected representative board that will also, you know, carry on some work. And that's part of what, uh, the governance group is working on, developing what will be the responsibilities of that board. And then HUD requires us to have some designated entities. And so these are the groups that are doing, uh, some heavier lifting of the work of the continuum of care. So that is an HMIS lead who oversees, um, the data system, data training, um, evaluating that system, running reports, uh, just kind of making sure the data is functioning correctly. The collaborative applicant who is responsible for, um, meeting all the deadlines of HUD, working with community partners who want to apply and helping put those applications together and submit that as a community application, um, to HUD. And then the coordinated entry lead who oversees that, um, process of how people are assessed and come into the service system or placed into programs. So we are at a point where we are starting to think about sustainable staffing for the continuum of care. Um, we are estimating that we might, we would need a coordinator who would sort of do the administrative support, um, needed to kind of keep things rolling with the board, the committees, the membership meetings, um, all of that work, maybe, and oversee the, you know, application process and make sure things are kind of going as they should. Um, we expect, uh, to be sustainable to have two full-time homeless management information system folks. So that's all the data support and training for the tri-county region. And then some combination of administrative and supervisory support for that team. Um, and so we are, um, you know, starting to think about even starting next year that we will need to, um, have some capacity to support this to move forward. Um, you can apply for HUD funds for planning, for HMIS and for coordinated entry. But you have to apply for it, uh, when you apply for the HUD funds. And that won't be until 2026. And then often those funds are not available until that award comes through and you start your actual program year. So we're looking a little further down the road for funding coming from HUD. So thinking about closing that gap, um, to get to that point. So we talked about the sort of next steps. A steering committee is going to complete the draft of the governance chart. We're going to have our first COC regional membership meeting. And hopefully those will then be happening on a regular basis as we go forward from that, um, meeting to approve the charter, submit our materials to HUD. Um, and right now really thinking about and working on identifying some sustainable funding, um, to staff the work of the COC. Uh, and that last point is just the various things that I talked about, um, uh, work that needs to be done. Any questions?
Well, um, housing is so complex and, um, federal housing and urban development department doesn't make it any. Make sure that it's functional.
I, if I could just jump in, Commissioner Ogier, thank you for those comments. I think that you're absolutely spot on. Uh, as I shared with all of you in my first round of conversation with you about this, as we embarked on this process, that I said CSC would cover the costs, uh, of being the collaborative applicant, being the HMIS lead, being the coordinated entry lead with funding that we had during COVID era, uh, funds and some of the funds that came down through the governor's office and so forth in the legislature. But that that wouldn't be sustainable because those funds were very time limited. And so moving forward, there would have to be some other process. I also shared that ultimately we don't know if CSC will be the, continue to fill those roles. The governance body of the continuum may decide that they want a different collaborative applicant. They want a different process, uh, of governance of that organ, of that entity. So we're just kicking this off, but we definitely are at the point now where we are ready to begin talking about those bridge funds and have some kind of tentative ideas of what we're looking at just to get us through until we can make those applications.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, a couple. I appreciate the timeline, um, uh, for federal government work. I think less than two years is warp speed. So I, I hope that, uh, timeline holds up. And just to, uh, follow up on your comments, Peggy, uh, I'm wondering if, uh, the change in the structure with, uh, partial merging with, uh, the COG and, and, uh, a overall, uh, ED, uh, will that, uh, have any effect on this, uh, project after, uh, January 1, when you're somewhere else?
When I'm playing with my grandkids.
Yeah.
Uh, so Commissioner Malone, I would have to say that I'm sure that there will be some impact in that, uh, there will be somebody else making financial decisions for the overarching, uh, body that is a COG and CSC, uh, governance. But we operate our programs all completely separately. They have to be able to stand alone and support themselves. Um, because just of the, the accounting requirements and the grant requirements that come with that. So that change in and of itself will not create an opportunity to support this program any better or any differently.
Okay. Uh, my other question is, uh, are, are any of the other 26 counties, um, doing a, uh, doing or thinking about doing a process like this?
I will ask Dina to jump in and, uh, let us know if she's heard of anyone. But as I shared with you, going into this process, Marion and Polk had pulled out of the Rock and become their own, uh, entity. So anybody else, Dina?
No, I'm not aware of any other region. The Rock does break itself into regions. Um, cause as you might imagine, a, a large 26-county body, um, can't just stay a 26-county body all by itself. Um, it's usually broken up into the same regions that the Community Action Agency Network represents within that 26 counties. So they're all, I think, several counties apiece. Um, they did recently, uh, revise their regions a little bit to make them fit more of the, uh, planning groups that came out of the governor's executive order. Because as you probably know, um, in the original executive order on the second day of Governor Kotek's, um, uh, term as governor, uh, she declared the emergency and gave actual emergency funding to all the other continuums of care in Oregon, except the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. So that gap had to be fixed legislatively by something called House Bill 5019. Um, so, uh, that was $26 million for 26 counties. So when you consider that the governor gave, uh, the Jackson County Continuum, $8.8 million by itself, um, that sort of shows you the contrast of what happens when you're in a, a big 26-county balance of state. So, um, I don't see anyone else looking to leave the Rock. Um, there's one region that I think is very positioned to, in order to do it. Um, I won't mention who they are and I wouldn't be surprised if one day they did. But for right now it's us. And, um, really it makes sense because of the counties left after Marion and Polk left. Um, we are basically the ones with the largest population centers. You know, we have between Lynn and Benton, we have two communities with over 50,000 people. And I imagine some of these counties, regions don't, don't have 50,000 people. Um, and we have a lot of providers who already work together. We're not a, we're not in counties where the Community Action Agency is basically the only game in town as some of the more rural counties are. And so that can limit their capacity, but also make it so they don't need a continuum because they already have all the services in-house. So, um, I'm in the unique position of trying to keep my foot in both worlds. I'm still on the Rock board. Um, so I know what's going on, but, and trying to, you know, create our own continuum. Um, but no, I don't actually see anyone else doing that at this time. I think it's a lot of work and it's, um, it requires a lot of ongoing capacity. That's probably a struggle.
Right. Thank you. And I'll see if I've got my acronyms. Rock is Rural Oregon Continuum of Care.
Correct. And it's what HUD refers to as a balance of state type of continuum. Some continuums are just a single city. Some are a single county. Lane County in Oregon is a continuum of care. But in every state, there's a balance of state continuum. which I think basically was created, um, in order to get all the counties in the country covered at some point. Um, and there's a couple states that the entire state is one continuum because they have such a small population. I think Wyoming is one of those or North Dakota.
Okay. And, uh, my experience at the Association of Oregon Counties may even be our unofficial slogan is if you've seen one Oregon county, you've seen one Oregon county. So, uh, you can go ahead and use that if that helps.
Uh, Community Action actually uses that, I think.
Uh, and I appreciate that, uh, the Lynn Benton Lincoln is a familiar grouping and makes sense to, um, break that out. So Godspeed.
I'll leave you with it with one parting thought. Um, I believe Commissioner Ogierro is remarking on some of the challenges and difficulties of working with HUD. And so one more acronym to, to add to your list is that, um, it's no coincidence that the acronym for HUD is duh spelled backwards.
I did not know that.
Um, well, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, you've been doing a great job updating us on the progress on this. Um, it's really exciting to see it progress. I know it's something that was talked about for years, so I'm really excited that timing was right and that we all had the will to make it move forward. Um, and I know it's a, it's a big lift. It's a lot of work. Um, but it's great because I think it's going to better serve, you know, our community members, the community members of Lynn, Lincoln and Benton counties. So thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Um, next up, we are switching to water. Um, we have an update from, um, Water Master for Water District Number 22, Joel Plon. And he's accompanied by Alyssa Mckin. Morning.
How about now? All right. So I'm Joel. I'm the District 22 Water Master with Water Resources Department. And I brought Alyssa Mckin, who is our Senior Water Advisor for focusing on the Willamette Valley, um, to just kind of introduce her and, and touch on, um, what she can offer. Uh, first I was gonna touch on this past water year though. I would say it was the best summer I've had since I've been Water Master and probably even Assistant Water Master. So going back, I don't know, 14 years. Um, so I cover Yam Hill, Polk and Benton County, the majority. And we had nearly double the water we have in past years during August and September. Um, part of that was because we got showers in August and September, which I haven't seen for a very long time. And, um, we just had a lot more water than we needed. Another part, I don't have statistics on, but just from being in the, you know, in the area and looking at the streams we regulate, I don't feel that there was as much demand this year as we have had in past years. And so that also contributed to having more water. Um, so we, we continue to get out there, measure, monitor, and then just compare to past years as we go through and try to get the word out. Um, if we're gonna be looking at regulation or not. And we're kind of radio silent because every time we measured, we had really good flows all summer. Um, so it was just, it was a great year, great year for water. And, um, hopefully we can continue that because it's been pretty tough, uh, for several years now. Um, and most summers, you know, we're regulating hundreds of people off. Um, and yeah, we just didn't have that problem this year. So uh, that, that's kind of the waterside update for this summer. And then I thought I'd turn it over to Alyssa so she can touch on what her said is.
Can I ask a couple of questions first?
Yes.
Um, uh, so no regulatory cutoffs this year. That's great. Um, I have noticed we are getting regularly now the notices of, um, applications for in-stream flow or for new water rights, water use, place of use, all that. Uh, but there's not very much action as far, as far as I can tell here in Benton County. Um, most of the, the new requests are up further north in the Willamette Valley. This might be actually a question for Alyssa as well. And I, I was just wondering what you're seeing in terms of patterns of, uh, requests for water rights.
You want to touch on the stages they're coming in?
Yeah, um, I'll speak too. Thanks for the question, Commissioner. Um, you're, you've referencing new in-stream water right applications that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has recently filed with our agency. Um, O D F W is several hundred applications, if I remember correctly, and they are submitting them in batches. So they broke up the Willamette River Basin, the Upper Basin, Middle Willamette, and then Lower Willamette. Can't recall what stage they're at. So that might be why you saw some filed already. Um, but they're extensive. They cover a lot of different tributaries that feed into the Willamette River. I think there's a good geographic representation of their new in-stream water right filing. So for those that aren't familiar, in-stream water rights are a way to protect water in-stream. Um, throughout the year, they're a legal protection, a state held water right that can be regulated. Joel, Joel does a lot of that work. So when those in-stream water rights aren't being met, he can start regulation, um, in support of those in-stream water rights.
So if we have more in-stream water rights, it's going to make your job a little bit more complicated.
Yeah, more monitoring for sure. And I, I believe you'll see more in the, I, the first two batches have come in and the third batch is going to, um, I, water rights, I could get you a better timeline on that, uh, and follow up. But I would say you're going to see a lot more, uh, this, with this third batch.
Mm hmm. That makes sense if they're working their way down the valley. Thank you.
Um, well, good morning. Uh, for the record again, my name is Alyssa Mckin. I'm a Senior Water Advisor and we, Joel and I were chatting about our, our time with you this morning. And we thought it would just be helpful to introduce who I am and what I do with the agency. Um, and mention a few things going on at the Water Resources Department that might be of interest to you. Um, so my position is relatively new. Um, I started a couple of years ago as we were, when we first started, we were called basin coordinators with the idea that we would focus on a river basin and help work on those complex water resource issues that need more time and attention from a pa- planning or policy or even a regulatory perspective. Um, so I cover the entire Willamette River Basin, but as you probably know, that's nearly impossible for one staff person. So I have to focus on some of those bigger key issues. Um, and so I developed a work plan early on and I, I met with different partners from across the state, even met with some of the staff here at Benton County to learn from their perspective, what they saw as some key water resources challenges that the state should be working on or, or partnering with local communities. So some of my focus areas, um, for the next few years is really tracking federal processes. So the U S Army Corps of Engineers owns and operates the Willamette Valley Project Reservoirs. Oregon has long identified that as a future supply of water that could help meet the basin's water needs, both in-stream water needs, but out-of-stream, uh, for irrigated agriculture or drinking water. Um, we've been working hard with the Army Corps of Engineers to study how we can allocate and use that water. And we have a lot more work to do. Um, some of it involves transferring storage rights, um, that are currently held for irrigation uses only to be broadened to store water, not only for irrigation, but water for municipal use and industrial use um, and water for fish and wildlife purposes. We also need to better understand the reliability of this water supply for the future. We have several listed and endangered fish species in the basin. And so we need to understand how that water can be managed to both meet those needs, but, uh, the needs of growing communities. So we're actively involved with federal efforts and also tracking the ongoing work. Um, you might've read in the news, there's a lot of different operations happening at the Willamette Valley Project Reservoirs. There's some significant deep drawdowns occurring at, uh, for example, Green Peter Reservoir, um, and Lookout Point Reservoir that are impacting downstream communities in terms of drinking water. So we're actively tracking and engaging in issues like that, as well as, uh, ongoing work of some of our sister agencies. So Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, for example, is on a multi-year effort to update their T M D Ls, their total maximum daily load allocations for temperature. So in my role as Senior Water Advisor, it's really trying to figure out how can I partner and work with other state agencies, um, but local governments as well on some of the water resources challenges or issues they're facing. We're also, um, working closely with agencies like the USGS, um, on their multi-year effort here in the Willamette River Basin, uh, to study what water availability looks like. Um, with the USGS having a presence in the basin, that might mean additional federal dollars for better measurement and monitoring, say more stream gauges to help work that Joel does and others understand what the flows are in the river at any given point in time. In meeting with several different stakeholders and different organizations over the last few years, there's some other issues that have come up that I think warrants further attention, time and resources. I think a lot of people are concerned about our small drinking water systems and the resiliency of these systems in terms of having backup water supplies and redundancy. Um, some water systems are just so small, you have volunteers that run those systems. How can our agency, myself included, um, create pathways to solutions? Um, when there's so many different state and federal agencies involved in water? Another thing that's come up quite frequently in my conversations is just concerns, not only from public drinking water, but private individual wells. Um, you know, we have rural residents that this is their only source of supply. You don't have other options to connect to cities. There's concerns not only from a quantity standpoint, but also water quality. Um, so what does the state need to be doing, um, as this issue, um, becomes further exacerbated by a change in climate and just more development pressure overall? So that was something, um, we've heard from communities, especially rural parts of the state, just the water supply reliability of individual homeowner wells. I think another thing that's really important that we're working on and hope to advance is just the connection between land use planning and water. Our agency, um, has several staff that can provide technical assistance to local governments. We tend to do it on an ad hoc basis. So if a county planning department calls our agency, you know, maybe with concerns about groundwater, groundwater development, we try and be a resource if we can. Um, but we also want to take a more proactive role where we can maybe reach out to the local governments and find out if they want to have a conversation about water and what we can do to support that. I want to transition with the little time that I have just to talk about a few programs, um, that our agency offers and oversees, uh, grant programs. A couple of years ago, we started a new, um, program called WORF. That stands for the Water Abandonment and Repair and Replacement Fund, um, which is a grant program that can help low income or moderate income home, homeowners, um, replace their well, um, if it's severely declining. It's, it's a grant program. It doesn't have, I would say, a ton of funding, but it has been used, um, quite frequently over the last several years. Um, so we can hook you up with our WORF coordinator and provide more information if you're interested in that program. We also offer, uh, feasibility study grants. So if people are trying to explore our communities, um, the viability, say of water reuse or, um, the feasibility of constructing a new storage project or doing some type of water efficiency project, we offer funding to help study that for a competitive feasibility study grants. And we can also pay for projects as part of a grant program. It's called Water Projects Grants and Loans. And what we're looking for are projects that have economic, environmental and social cultural benefits. So these are all grant offerings, um, that are sometimes offered once or twice per year. Um, our website has a, a funding opportunities link that you can go and learn more about these. But I work with staff, uh, the grant staff in, in the section I work in. So if you want more information, we're more than happy to talk about what grant opportunities we offer. Another one that's exciting to me, um, I'm a planner by heart, is, um, for several years, we've been partnering with local communities across the state to help them develop their own, uh, integrated water resources plan. Plan that accounts for water quantity, water quality and habitat and ecological needs, but a plan that's locally led and locally initiated. Um, this was kind of a pilot for our agency. We, we worked with, uh, community members on the mid-coast, over in the Harney Basin, uh, Upper Grand Ron and the Lower John Day. And we're excited with this new phase that Oregon Legislature invested $2 million, uh, to help us kind of expand this program to where communities might want to take up, uh, developing their own water resources plan. So we're currently in a phase right now, um, our planning coordinator, her name is Lily Proll. She's leading up a rulemaking effort right now to determine the best use of these funds. You know, what can we do to, to really help communities that want to build that capacity and engage around water and start planning for their water future? So, so more to come on that. Last two things, I know this is a lot, but I really just wanted to give you a flavor of, of what we're covering here. Um, Oregon has recently adopted new rules are around groundwater and how we allocate groundwater in the state. Um, this is an effort that's, it's a multi-year effort. Our Water Resources Commission adopted new rules this summer. And the goal is to really make sure that groundwater is more sustainably managed for, for future generations. What it does mean is the likelihood of obtaining a new groundwater permit, say for irrigation or municipal use, might be more challenging to, to obtain a new water right for groundwater. Because we're looking at the long-term supply and the long-term susta- sustainability of that moving forward. And lastly, I just wanted to get on your radar. Um, Oregon has a statewide water plan. We, it's a long name. We call it the Integrated Water Resources Strategy. It's a long-term blueprint for how the state plans to meet its both in-stream and out-of-stream water needs. Um, it's, uh, we work in partnership with other state agencies, um, and local partners to develop this plan. We're required by the Oregon Legislature to update it. Uh, the cycle was every five years. Now we're on a every eight-year cycle. But we're currently in the process of updating the Integrated Water Resources Strategy. And I believe there's some public meetings planned for, for early November to gather input on the direction, the, the priorities the state will really focus on in the coming years for implementation of that strategy. So that was a lot, I know, to cover in our short time, but I am happy to take any questions if you have any.
Well, I know that, uh, ever since I've been in office, we've been talking about an integrated water resources planning activity for Benton County. Um, we were interested, um, I, we applied for pilot phase in fact. And, uh, when I was at the Mary's River Watershed Council, we also were considering an application. Um, uh, but we've never had the capacity to do it. It's one of those things that falls off. It's not a mandate. So, uh, for a county to pursue a water resources plan, uh, we have to carve out staff time from something else or allocate, um, general fund dollars to it as a priority. So I'm excited to hear about the funding that's available. Um, maybe that conversation will be picked up again, uh, after I roll off the board. Um, and, uh, look forward to the potential for that. Um, I'm also very glad to hear about the WORF program for landowners to, um, upgrade or replace abandoned wells. Um, that is always a need, uh, for our rural communities. And I'm hoping that our staff are aware of that in community development and environmental health so that they can help people access those funds. And again, if, if, uh, folks at the Watershed Council or the Soil and Water Conservation District are aware of those funds, they're the ones that are most likely to run across folks that need them. Um, so yeah, or an extension.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. I'll, I'll talk to our grant staff when I'm back in the office and see if we've. I'll talk to our grant staff when I'm back in the office and see if we meet those connections.
Thank you.
I appreciate the attempted coordination. There's only one supply of water and has lots of jurisdictions and people that would like to have some. And I think we're accurate to say we're a little behind on figuring out what's in the ground and how sustainable that is. But at least we're getting going on that, that kind of effort. And you mentioned the drawdown. I know that on the San Diego that like last, it's late summer affected some downstream communities. And I know there's conversations going on, but I hope there's better communications between federal, we're of engineers type folks and the city water folks. And so there aren't surprises like there were last year. But appreciate the update and trying to get a better handle on this precious resource, even though we, we think we have a lot of it. And at times we do, but at other times, not so much. And it's interesting that you mentioned, this was a good season for late summer water flows, stream flows. And I live rural and have a little creek and it's still going. It didn't get down to almost nothing this year, which it has the last couple of years. But it's interesting, this was a bad fire season. And I think fire season was just canceled noon yesterday. And the report was, well, we hadn't had a real nice soaking rain like we were hoping for. But things have calmed down enough that we are now out of fire season. But it's interesting, kind of a couple of different viewpoints on the same resource. But a lot of the fires got going before the time period you're talking about. But interesting, a couple of different viewpoints. Thank you.
I have a couple of different questions and comments. I'll piggyback off of what Commissioner Ojero said about the planning with a focus on water. I think we, I think we do have the political will. I mean, we've had joint meetings with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission. I know our Planning Commission is very interested in that. We're just, we're in between community development directors. So hopefully we'll be getting one of those sometime soon. And hopefully that person can bring some expertise that could be helpful with that. You know, we're also undertaking our voluntary periodic review. So I mean, I think, you know, the timing, I think we can fit the timing together. So a couple of questions. Do you have, could you send us like your website? And maybe links to some of the work you do and the data, that'd be great to be able to take a look at. And then do you have, what interaction do you have, if you have any, with the Gwama, the South Willamette Valley Groundwater Management Area?
That's a great question. Thank you, Joel. You might want to pipe into. Being in my position for two and a half years, I'm also trying to figure out what my role is in relationships. So they have an upcoming meeting.
Monday, I'll be there. That's one of my.
Okay, great. I'll see you there. So I'm trying to come up to speed on that effort, what's underway, what efforts, how they're implementing an action plan. I think several of our hydrogeologists have been involved over the years too. We have hydrogeologists that have designated areas that work in different parts of the state. And then sometimes too, our water masters also attend those Gwama meetings. So for me, I'm still in a learning phase of how my agency can interact and what we can do in support.
Yeah, I haven't personally attended that, but the water master out of the Eugene office, Lenny of Lakewood, has been attending those along with the hydrogeologist, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I know they've had some turnover with staffing and, you know, COVID, of course, put everything off. And this, you know, isn't meant to sound critical and certainly not of you or your organization. But I feel like there's just a disconnect between the work that they're doing and the monitoring and then actually making a difference. In the last meeting that I attended, there were, you know, farmers and community members whose wells are being monitored and they have the results, but they're not sharing them with the farmers or the landowners. They don't even know that their wells are, have these issues. So that's pretty concerning. So, yeah, if there's any thoughts on how to partner and move that forward, I would love to have those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that and I look forward to seeing you next week. I think another part of our agency that folks may not be familiar with is we have a well construction section. So we ensure that wells are properly constructed and properly abandoned if needed to avoid contamination of the resource. So that might be a nexus where our agency can play a role in the Gwama.
And all the wells that we have measurements for, static water, that's now online data. So you can see any well that maybe we measured for a period in time in the past or are currently measuring now. When newer water rights, let's say in the last 10, 14 years have been issued, there's often, almost every time, a requirement that they have static water level measurements done every March. And so we have a mapping tool online and you can just look in a general area and see, okay, what wells did we monitor? Or what wells are we currently monitoring? And we can include that information.
Right, that's great. And so another question, so does any notification go out to the landowners? Or is it just like, hey, come and see if you're, you know, what your results are? Or is it just, they maybe need to know to go and look?
So the landowners, there's a handful that I personally measure. And so we've given them the website and we've been measuring these since like the 60s. So we have tons of data showing just the fluctuation, natural fluctuation in groundwater. And then the water rates that require it, that was a permit condition. So the landowner is responsible for having that measured and submitting it to the department. And then that's put online. So we're, pretty much everybody that we measured for knows we're measuring it. It's been more helpful when people call because they're concerned about groundwater. And we're able to say, hey, you know, here's some wells that are relatively close. And, you know, here's what we're seeing in those wells.
Perfect. So it sounds like it's kind of built into your system, which for the the landowners to make sure that they're involved and know, so that's good.
And oftentimes I get calls from landowners just wanting more information on how can we monitor our well? Or how can we as a community monitor our well because we're concerned about water levels? And so we try to give them as much info as we can because it, it's really easy to do. And we have had a lot of communities, you know, five people or less come together and just one person goes around quarterly and measures the well.
Great, thank you. I had one other question, I'm sorry. For the Integrated Water Resources Strategy Plan, you said that that is currently going to be in the process of being updated. How can I get on the listserv to?
Oh, we can follow up with you too. There's a public mailing list I can contact. Crystal, Crystal Grinnell is our IWRS specialist. So I can make sure your name is on her mailing list when I leave this meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll include that as a follow-up if anyone else wants to join the mailing list too. I think you can subscribe yourself, if I remember correctly.
I've been on that list in the past, so I suspect that's the case. Yeah, and for the groundwater management area, the nitrates and nitrates that are of concern. My understanding is that they have been at fairly low levels here. And with technology change, the levels have not been anywhere near as concerning. And of course, with the huge problems that are going on in eastern Oregon, I think our Gwama has kind of taken the backseat because we don't have the same level of health effects that they've been seeing over there or litigation, thankfully. So, but yes, it's, when I attended in the past, those meetings were well-attended and they were sending out all of those results on a regular basis to landowners. But again, with COVID, things changed.
Yeah, I think there's been a staff turnover at least twice, I think, since then. So I think that's maybe part of it.
I had a different question and that's going all the way back to the beginning of your report, Alyssa, talking about the reallocation and Army Corps of Engineers. I think about six years ago, it looked like that study was done and it was sailing on its way to Washington DC to the Army Corps and it was going to be sent to Congress and this was going to be done. But what, what's happened?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question and you summarized it really well. Back in 2019, the chief's report was finalized and sent off to Congress. And Congress approved the reallocation as part of the Water Resources Development Act in 2020. So what that means is Congress took the big bucket of stored water and basically split it up into three buckets for future use. 70% of the stored water will be used in the future for fish and wildlife purposes, downstream flow augmentation. 20% of the stored water can be used for future irrigation needs. I think it's like 327,000 acre feet of water, so it's a sizable amount of water. And then the remaining like 10% or so is set aside for future municipal or industrial use. So that's, that reallocation's been approved by Congress. But there's several steps that need to happen in order to make that water of use in the state of Oregon. And the Army Corps of Engineers for the last several years has been very much focused on complying with court-ordered injunction measures. So that's been a big focus for them. They've also been developing the Environmental Impact Statement, the EIS, for the future operations and maintenance of the reservoirs. Meanwhile, our fisheries, federal fisheries agencies like National Marine Fisheries Services is also developing a new biological opinion that will have implications for water management. So the reallocation kind of took, put it off to the side while the Army Corps is working on all of these other bigger high priority issues. But we've been in ongoing conversations with the Bureau of Reclamation as well because they administer the irrigation contracts for stored water. The Army Corps of Engineers and NIMPs. The big lift that we need to do is we need the federal government to file a water rights transfer to change the character of use on the storage rights from irrigation to also allow these other uses that I just mentioned. Another factor at play is drinking water providers in the Willamette Basin have never been able to access stored water. So in order to do so, they need to, the Army Corps needs to develop like a water supply contracting program where different municipalities or industries will purchase stored water from the federal government. We're working on having more discussions about the costs of stored water because it's incredibly expensive for some of these smaller communities to be able to afford to purchase stored water. And we also want to work with our federal partners on understanding water supply reliability. So if you have all of these competing needs in different missions from flood risk management of those reservoirs to balancing that with storing water to augment summer uses. If you're an entity considering purchasing stored water, EWEB, Eugene Water and Electric Board is one that's pursuing that. How reliable will that water supply be in the future? You know, who, when there isn't enough stored water available to meet all the needs, who will receive that water first? So we have a lot of work ahead of us to do in terms of making this water available and also protecting that water in-stream. So what does an in-stream water right look like from the use of stored water? And how do you protect it downstream to where it needs to be measured? And then how do you align that with federal objectives? When you've got federal buy-up flow requirements, how does that align with an in-stream water right? So quite a few complex issues to deal with. Right now, our biggest challenge is just having the time, resources and energy from our federal partners to make forward progress because of these other competing needs they have with the ongoing EIS and injunction order measures and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I think I was naively thinking that once Congress acted, that that automatically reallocated the water and there was no water use transfer that needed to happen, that they just did it, but no.
It's a big lift though. It was to get to Congress and have it approved in 2020. You know, the reallocation has been a priority of the Water Resources Department since the early 90s. That's when we first started some of these studies to figure out if stored water could be made available for future uses. So to have Congress approve it in, in 2020 is a monumental event. But there's, there's still a big lift and a lot of work to do going forward.
Thank you.
For the questions.
And I wanted to apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
Oh, it's okay. It's a tough one. If we ever run into each other in the future, just remember it's micken like chicken.
I will do that. Then do you get Alyssa McChicken?
It's happened yet, but could.
Sorry, just couldn't help it. Any other questions for either Alyssa or Joel? Okay, I really appreciate the update. Joel, thanks for bringing Alyssa along and I think that we'll have much to talk about moving forward.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Need a break? Okay, I think we're going to keep going. Sometimes we take a break in our meetings, but knowing that Commissioner Malone needs to take off, we will move on into the presentation by Valley Neighbors for Environmental Quality and Safety. So I know that we had some trouble with your technology. So I think we're going to be operating the PowerPoint from staff instead of from your computers. But welcome. No, I think Eric is going to be doing the shifting.
Button for on. Yes, I was going to mention that to let everyone in the audience know that apparently the technical difficulties consist of county wifi can't handle Macs. So we brought our presentation on a Mac laptop. And so, so we had to pivot. So if we have, if we kind of have some hiccups, it's because of that. So we'll do the best we can. Good morning, commissioners. Really wanted to thank you for giving us permission to make this longer presentation to you today. I know you didn't have to do that, but you did, so we really appreciate that. Let's start with who are we and why are we? We are Valley Neighbors for Environmental Quality and Safety, but generally go by our acronym, VNX. And our website is www.coffinbutefacts.org. We are a community group composed of neighbors from all over Benton, Polk and Lynn counties who have multiple concerns about the Coffinbut landfill and oppose any expansion. But you already know that. So that's not why we're here today. We're here because we want to demonstrate we are on the same page with you when it comes to caring about the future of Benton County environmentally, fiscally and socially. Here are a few words that summarize what we as a group try to embody. We're skeptical and aware. We are undaunted. We are action-focused and we are future-looking. These words also represent what we feel up to now has been lacking in Benton County government, especially in relation to the landfill. Our hope is that this can change in the near future. A thing you may not have considered is that we can be your resource for you. But we'll talk more about that later. One of the things about VNX, one defining characteristic is we do the work individually and collectively. We're not just skeptical, we find out what the truth is. We fact-check things. We are undaunted, we speak up like this presentation to you right now. We take actions such as contacting the EPA and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and our representatives in the press to share what we found and to get action, such as the EPA's ongoing investigation of the landfill. And above all, we look at the future when asking questions, speaking up and taking action. We want to be making a better future for this county and the people in it, for the planet we all share, actually. in it, for the planet we all share, actually. My name is Debbie Palmer, and together with co-presenters Kate Harris, Catherine Sterns, and Virginia Scott, we hope to give you a more in-depth look at the Coffinbutte landfill and the future of Benton County from the perspective of the community outside these walls. This will include achievable actions you should take. Kate will talk about the landfill fires and smelly dump days. Catherine will talk about enforcement of the tonnage cap. Virginia will cover the very real and immediate issue of climate damage from the landfill's methane emissions. And I will close with a look towards the future, showing alternatives other counties are doing and innovative solutions from other parts of the world. With that, I turn it over to Kate.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to discuss two topics and have three associated action items that we would like you to undertake.
Can you hold on just one sec? Are you still working on getting the PowerPoint up? Oh, on and off. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you for checking. Our first issue is landfill odor. This has been a fact of life for many folks, even from miles away. We call them dump days when you can spell the smell the gases coming off of the landfill. Sometimes they are so noxious, they drive us indoors. We've consistently had Republic and the county assure us there wasn't much gas leaking off of the landfill. But now detection technology is catching up to what the boots on the ground have known for years, that the air pollution at the landfill is out of compliance. As you know, its methane emission levels are under investigation by the EPA. I now understand during this past monitoring year, which ended in August, Coffinbutte landfill has also exceeded its threshold for non-methane organic compound emissions, or NMOCS. Again, no surprise to the neighborhood. NMOCS are the smelly and toxic stuff in landfill gas. One of our biggest concerns is that nobody can tell us what is actually in that smelly cloud. So our first action item is to establish a landfill concerns hotline that anyone can call when they smell the landfill or have other concerns about its operations. This hotline can be maintained by DSAQ, Your Disposal Site Advisory Committee. It fits right in with their state mandated responsibility to receive the community's concerns and collect them for Oregon DEQ. As things stand, the county has actually backslid on this responsibility. There used to be a phone number on DSAQ's webpage that residents could call with concerns, but staff removed it about a year ago. I understand DSAQ had requested it be reinstated, but to date, that has not happened. The value of this hotline, if done properly, people have one place they can call to inform the county, Republic Services, and DEQ. Our second issue is fire safety and prevention. I'm going to describe three potentially catastrophic fires, specific to Republic operations, that occurred within the past six months during the worst fire season on record for Oregon, as depicted on the slide. Two were at the landfill itself, and one was at the Pacific Region Compost Facility. Note that these were in addition to three grass fires, which occurred in close proximity to the landfill within the last 15 months, all in very high-risk locations due to prevailing winds. And let's not forget the September 6 lightning storm this year, which caused numerous serious fires within Benton County. Multiple lightning strikes, as depicted by the blue dots on the slide, occurred on and near the landfill during this event, a truly hair-raising concern considering all the flammable methane present. The first fire was May 18. Several hours after the landfill had closed, a passing motorist on Highway 99 called in a large black plume of smoke. Adair and Corvallis Fire Departments responded, finding the large hydraulic tippers and their hydraulic lines on fire up on the working face of the landfill. Last month, Brett Davis of Republic Services told DSAQ that trash had been burning there earlier that day, and landfill workers thought they had it extinguished. At closing time, everyone went home. When asked about this, he said that when they do hot work, such as welding, they are required to leave a watcher on site for several hours afterwards, but they have no similar policy or requirement for hot burning trash. The second fire was July 24. It started by the open methane flares in the field south of the landfill. This fire mirrored one that happened in the same location several years ago. No significant changes had been made to the site to prevent another similar fire, and no monitoring system had been implemented. The third fire was just September 23. This started as a daytime fire at the PRC. Once again, at closing time, everyone went home without leaving a watcher. Several hours later, a passerby on Camp Adair Road called in a large plume of smoke, which again required local fire response. In all three of these cases, there were known flames present earlier that day, and yet all three locations were left unattended with no monitoring system in place after hours. In a recent interview with KLCC, Republic proclaimed, quote, "We have robust monitoring and emergency management systems in place to protect employees, the community, and the environment in the event of a fire. That system worked as designed." Well, guess what? In all three of these recent fires, their robust monitoring system consisted of consisted of local motorists spotting the smoke and their robust emergency management system. That was all local volunteer fire response because all three fires were reported after working hours. How is it the Republic gets away with both the responsibility and the cost of landfill fire monitoring and response being the job of the general public and our local volunteer and paid fire departments? This brings us to our second action item. Since Republic has stated in recent meetings that they are unable to facilitate after-hours monitoring, staffed, electronic, or otherwise, this means that Benton County residents at large are the landfill's fire watchers outside of working hours, which amounts to approximately 68% of the year. So in the interest of public safety, we urge you to require that Republic issue monthly notices informing the public of their responsibility and instructing them what to watch for and what to do. Proper training is the key to effective emergency response. Our third action item is please insist that Republic Services complete post-incident reports of all fire events at the landfill, whether they happen during or after working hours. Other high-risk industries such as aviation, military operations, and hospital care, complete post-incident safety reports within 24 hours of an event. It's a critical part of their risk management. For safetalkideas.com, quote, "An incident report is a document that records details about an unexpected event that occurs within an organization. This could be an accident, injury, or any other type of incident that deviates from normal operations and leads to a loss of production, assets, or reputation. It's used to document the facts, facilitate an investigation, and develop strategies to prevent similar incidents in the future." What we have come to understand is that Republic apparently has no such system in place, which is frankly unacceptable in 2024, particularly from a company who continues to claim they value sustainability and being a good neighbor. In recent meetings, Republic leadership claimed to not know how many fires happen each year, although they notify DEQ after each incident if they follow Section 8.1 of their operations plan, that is. Before I go, let me just add, odor and fire are just two examples out of many that Republic is an irresponsible neighbor. None of these issues are new. Republic has been unwilling to listen, unwilling to comply with regulations, and unwilling to think proactively consistently through time. We have come to view any representation they make with skepticism. We hope the county will be very discerning from here on out when considering any statements, plans, or promises made by Republic, including their well-timed pre-election promise to stop disposing of leachate into the Willamette River just upstream of Adair Village's water source. In discussing water quality, please ensure you take your responsibilities seriously and to quote Commissioner Malone, "to protect this precious resource." Thank you. I will now turn it over to Catherine Sterns.
I'm here to talk about the tonnage cap for the landfill. The cap is the limit Benton County imposes on the amount of garbage that Republic Services delivers into the landfill every year. This cap is cap is reported as 1.1 million tons per year. I think I speak for a lot of county residents when I say that it's important that Benton County enforces that cap. I'm asking you Commissioners to come out with a clear statement assuring people that their county government stands with them. It's reasonable for county citizens to have a clear statement that includes identifying the tripwire that triggers enforcement of the cap. And it's also reasonable for the county citizens to have an unambiguous statement of what the penalty for exceeding the cap is, as well as a rationale as to how the penalty will deter Republic Services from exceeding the cap again, and again, and again. I raise these reasonable concerns because nothing like a fine or penalty happened in 2017, when the people of Yamhill County successfully prevented their riverbank landfill from expanding. The waste that used to go to that regional landfill started coming to Republic Services Coffinbutte landfill. This additional waste from Yamhill County caused the landfill to go over the limit that was in place at that time. And what happened next? Nothing. Instead, Benton County signed a memorandum of understanding, which essentially said, okay, fine. No penalties, no fines. Then the amount of trash going into the landfill effectively doubled. We all know that if the county sheriff catches us exceeding the posted speed limit, there will be consequences, especially if we are caught driving at double speed limit. The sheriff isn't going to give us a memorandum of understanding. There will be fines. There will be penalties. I highlight this because Marion County's incinerator is choosing to stop accepting Marion County's waste. This means over 100,000 more tons of garbage will be dumped into Republic Services Coffinbutte landfill. As things stand now, this added tonnage will push the landfill over the cap. I speak for hundreds of signers of VNECs petition when I ask for a clear statement that our county county government's action on this will not be, okay, fine. And that our county government is not going to give Republic Services some token fine, which they will happily pay as a business expense. Ready for the slide, please? Thank you. Getting to a clear statement of accountability for Republic Services may require the hiring of legal counsel from outside to face off with Republic Services about these cap issues. Commissioners, here is an email that you may not have seen before. This is an exchange between Jim Hutchinson of Republic Services and our county council, Vance Cronie. His email is dated 2020. And for context, at this time, the 2020 franchise agreement is all but signed. Mr. Hutchinson says Republic Services realizes they forgot to add a provision they meant to include. What they left out was a provision that the cap of the tonnage would be raised a little bit every year. You'd think it was too late for this provision to be added, except that is not what Vance Cronie says. He does say, "Don't worry about that hard cap. It won't matter one, because I cannot imagine that you, Republic Services, won't get your expansion. And when the expansion happens, the cap goes away." This is indeed a provision in the franchise agreement that Mr. Cronie negotiated for our county. Our own county council negotiated away any county control over tonnage caps. If Republic Services expands to the south side of Coffinbutte Road, the cap is lifted entirely and unequivocally removed. Mr. Cronie goes on to say, "But if by chance you don't get the expansion by 2025, I should still be here at the county, and I can help us come to some arrangement." I'm paraphrasing Mr. Cronie. His actual words are on the screen. Thus, Vance Cronie may not be the best choice to enforce the cap. I'm not sure his heart would be in be in it for the benefit of the people who live and breathe in Benton County. And maybe an outside legal counsel could renegotiate the 2020 franchise agreement and remove the provision that lifts the cap if there is an expansion. We need that cap to protect the life of the landfill for the benefit of for the people of Benton County. Many of us feel Vance Cronie has consistently given bad advice to the Commissioners about the landfill. In our opinion, he did an exceedingly poor job of negotiating the last two franchise agreements. It's hard not to feel Mr. Cronie holds his relationship with Republic Services in higher regard than he does for the people of Benton County. We ask that you keep that in mind moving forward. I think what the people of Benton County fear the most is that this cycle will just repeat again, and again, and again. We also fear that folks in some other county or state might choose to close their polluting trash facility and instead send their waste to Republic Services Coffinbutte landfill. People in Benton County are also afraid that county government will not stand up to Republic Services due to the revenues received from hosting the landfill. Another concern we have is that our county government fears confronting Republic Services and holding them accountable because our county government has already rolled over on this. Now, we are becoming Western Oregon's garbage pail. Lastly, another fear is that in 20 years, we're going to be the ones left holding that bag. That bag will contain 50 million tons of garbage. Well, then, our new motto for Benton County can be "at your disposal." Virginia.
The people of Benton County are concerned about the impacts of climate change, not just for us and the nature around us, but for the people and ecosystems everywhere. And I know that you Commissioners have expressed your concern as well as and taken action on it. I want to show you a graph in two parts. The first part shows how much greenhouse gas pollution Benton County government is producing. Last year, your operations released about 86 metric tons of carbon dioxide every nine days. And you're taking action about that. The bracket on the right shows how much you've pledged to cut your emissions by the year 2030. Basically, you've pledged to cut them in half, which is great. Everyone should do their part. The second part of the graph compares the county's climate damage in the lower left to the damage on the right caused by Coffinbutte landfill during the same nine-day period. Carbon Mapper flew over the landfill and quantified one of its methane leaks. They classified it as persistent, meaning it was leaking like this when they started looking at it, and it was still leaking like this when they ended the survey. Again, everyone should do their part. But if we are serious about climate action, you can no longer ignore the elephant in the room. And you can start by charging your county staff to develop graphs like this. Knowledge unlocks effective action. You have an advisory committee dedicated to studying Coffinbutte landfill and its impacts. You could charge them to study the environmental impacts of the landfill to give you the information you need to take leadership on this issue. For a lot of people in the county and elsewhere, this is a moral issue, the defining moral issue of our time. In February, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended that doctors incorporate climate change counseling into clinical practice, assess climate risks, and recommend climate solutions when screening for and addressing social determinants of health children. They're saying that climate anxiety has become as foundational a mental health problem as housing. One cause of the climate anxiety in children and adults is seeing leaders who only give this moral issue lip service, or who claim that their hands are tied by existing laws and protocols when it's time for leadership, when it's time for leadership to move beyond those laws and protocols. I return to you, Debbie.
Hello again. Some more questions for you Commissioners. What sort of future is the landfill creating for the county and its neighbors? Why do Benton County government's endorsed values all seem to disappear when it's time to talk about the landfill? As Kiko Denzer mentioned in his letter to you included in your packet, here are what other counties are doing. In Yamhill County, the people opposed expansion of their regional landfill all the way to the Land Use Board of Appeals and won. They let the landfill fill up, but then had to sue in order to get it to close. They won that, too. Meanwhile, they adopted the goal of zero waste and are actively taking aggressive steps to reduce their trash generation. Lane County has announced plans to build and operate the most advanced integrated reuse and recycling facility in the nation. Polk County is looking into building a waste transfer station so as to break their dependence on the Coffinbutte landfill. And Portland Metro decided many years ago that sending trash to landfills in the Willamette Valley went against their stated values of protect- Valley went against their stated values of protecting the environment. They did their homework, establishing that the valley was an irrevocably bad place to have a landfill and basically took a moral stand against increasing landfilling in the valley. They transitioned away from doing that in accordance with their values to a location far more suitable up in northeast Oregon where it is very dry and sparsely populated. In other parts of the world, truly innovative actions have already been taken. Take Copenhagen Hill in Denmark, for example. The world's cleanest waste to energy power plant is not an ugly monstrosity. Instead, it is an architectural wonder, a manmade mountain that is a destination with a ski slope, hiking trails, a huge climbing wall, and the best views of Copenhagen, whose only hint at the technology beneath it are some stacks that emit steam. We provided a link to this short video about this remarkable place in your packet and it is also available on the resources page of our website. We're not suggesting that Benton County try to build something like this. The idea is simply to open your eyes and your minds to the kinds of things that can be accomplished when you seek out future oriented solutions instead of maintaining the status quo by hiring consultants who come up with plans for you based on how things were done in the past. In the EU, where there is a much higher level of environmental consciousness, they effectively no longer landfill municipal waste. They still use landfills, but only for inert mineralized materials that no longer react with the environment. They recognize the detrimental impacts of landfills on all levels, the environment, the people, the exponential long-term costs and valuable resources lost, and have figured out alternatives. We can learn from them. A nonprofit up in Seattle, Institute for Energy Resource Management, would love the opportunity to arrange a trip to the EU for Oregon's regional and state representatives, a tour of solutions like Copenhagen Hill, and a chance to meet with other European innovators in this arena. So please talk to us, don't tune us out, we are here for you. As I said in the beginning, think of us as a resource. You spend so much money on consultants when there's all this brain power right here in Benton County and nearby. We can help you find it, we delve, we can help you identify the questions you really want to be asking and locate resources you would never have found through your usual channels. Benton County's future is eventually one without a landfill. We can transition to a post landfill future on our terms, or we can do nothing until it all collapses. Benton County government is currently firmly on the second path, and indeed, the collapse may already be starting to happen. We in Venecks believe we should be on the first path and that the time to start down it is now. In accordance with your stated values, walk the talk and let us help. I have a recap of the action items for this presentation if you would like me to reiterate them. First one is establish a landfill concerns hotline for informing county and DEQ and Republic Services all in one place. Second is insist Republic Services issue monthly notices to the public of their fire watch responsibility with instructions on what to watch out for and what to do. Third is require Republic Services to complete post incident reports on all fire incidents and submit them to the county. Fourth is commit to enforcing the cap on garbage intake, inform the public on how it will be done. Next is charge your staff to study and document environmental impacts of the landfill, especially climate impacts. And lastly, engage Venecks. Think of us as a resource. Oh, I want to add one more thing. As you probably saw, some of the slides that we presented were updated since I submitted stuff for your packet, so I will be emailing Erica with our script and the updated slides for the record.
Thank you, appreciate that, I noticed that they were updated. Thank you for the presentation and I really appreciate the action items, you know, the specificity of your requests. I know that we, at the staff level, they had some questions about the greenhouse gas slides and the relative volumes, not about the Benton County data, but about the metric 10 equivalents of carbon dioxide from Coffinbut, just because it was so out of scale with other emitters. And as a point of reference, one of the things that was mentioned was that all of the OSU campuses statewide emit 117,000 tons a year. And so seeing the scale of the Coffinbut emissions at 795,000 tons a year seemed really outsized. So we'd love to dig in more, we'd love to be speaking the same language. I think that's a really good point, we need to have a common understanding. And, you know, to answer the basic question, the county and the board of commissioners and the planning commission have to go through the basic land use processes, given that Republic Services is a landowner with private property rights and we have a land use system here in the state, rules that people agree to abide by. So we will get to where we get to as the planning commission makes their decisions and whatever decision might be appealed to the board of commissioners and then it may well go to Luba. But just know that we're not waiting for all of that, that's, you know, part of what's going on. But we did kick off the sustainable materials management planning process yesterday up in Salem. It was a great meeting, there was great energy. It's a group of committed people that represent the 13, not all of the 13 counties, but most of them that contribute waste to Coffinbut, thinking about ways to produce less waste and divert things from the waste stream, what kind of materials, recovery facilities we would need. So a lot of discussion about single waste streams versus commingled waste streams, which are really dirty, about what the state is doing and what we can do at county and municipality level. And I believe that that conversation is really going to be a game changer because our 13 counties, this waste shed, is responsible for 70% of the waste from the state of Oregon, a little bit more than that in population. But we can do so much better. And if we pool our resources across all of those counties, we can do it a lot more effectively than Benton County doing it alone. Obviously, we can't control much more than the 10% of the waste that goes into the landfill right now. And if we can leverage everyone else and create a more effective and efficient system, we'll be better off. But, you know, that regulatory path is going this way, we're going to keep looking at all those materials reduction strategies in parallel and hopefully we'll get to where we need to be.
Well, I appreciate the comment, I think it was from Debbie Palmer about we're all in this together. And I have felt that all along and sometimes the conversation doesn't seem like that, so I appreciate the comment from yesterday's, and the acronym is SMMB, one nod, Sustainable Materials Management Plan Process. It will take approximately nine months to run its course. But one of the takeaways I got from yesterday's meeting, there was an excellent person from Erie, somebody, St. McDonald from St. Vincent de Paul in Eugene. And what, and they're doing a wonderful job of intercepting materials. And the takeaway was they have to be separated. You can't have a pile of solid waste and you can get very far in reuse. So one that got my attention because I hadn't even thought of it, they recycle candle wax, like tons. And finished product, they try to separate by colors, it's like glass and finished product, I think is a four pound block that they sell to somebody who wants purple candle wax or white candle wax and just niches there. It's profitable for them, which is kind of a key, maybe they can subsidize something for a little while, but they have to be able to make money. They're currently making money on mattresses. And so we have to do a much better job of separating. And DEQ and their wisdom 20 years ago, I remember having ins of maybe even white paper, colored paper, I can't remember all the categories and then, nah, just put it all in one aisle and we'll figure it out. Now, that hasn't worked very well. And so a mistake quite a while ago is put us in the hole. I've talked a fair amount about construction materials, 15 to 20% of what goes into Coffinbut is construction materials, a lot of wood that could be reused or definitely kept out of the landfill. And Republic has been talking about that for at least five years that I know of and we need to move that process along. And I think with this SMMB group, Benton County has some clout, but if we organize and have five counties or more saying this is what we need, I think we can hopefully get people's attention. Some of the alternatives you mentioned, Lane County, well, Lane County owns the facility and that's a very different kettle of fish than the position we're in. I would assume European governments own some of their facilities and have a lot more flexibility on investing in processing facilities and, but I think we can all agree that the goal should be to keep as much material out of Coffinbut, especially organics and to reduce the greenhouse gas, the methane emissions. So I think that's what I had, but I'll go back to, we have to do a better job of separating materials kind of at the source and also getting the manufacturers involved in when they're making something, well, how does that, what's its lifespan? Like apparently in, back to the mattress conversation is they're now putting some kind of stuff or glue in the mattresses that make them harder to recycle. So the processes that are in place can't handle the new, or can't handle as well the new product and the manufacturers have to be involved. Another comment was, stop using glue when you're building houses because it makes recycling the wood very difficult. I think that's what I had.
All right, well, I have, I think, several questions and comments, so I'm just going to try to go down the list and hopefully we can get through them all. First of all, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate the presentation, you did a great job. Thank you for everyone who came in the audience today. I really appreciate people who are willing to take the time to show up. That's great. You know, at the beginning, you mentioned that list of qualities. I really admire all of those qualities, so please keep that up. You mentioned the hotline that could be monitored by DSEC and you said that that did used to be a thing that DSEC did, that the county did. Yeah, there you go.
This is on, yes. Well, the county used to have a phone number on the DSEC webpage. The solid waste coordinator answered that phone. And so there was indeed a way to, for people to phone in. That phone number disappeared off the page.
Okay, so the, I mean, at the very least, the lowest hanging fruit could be to just put that phone number back on, but then your request is to go a step further and have something that's monitored.
Yes, because it's always been a stopgap thing. You know, why call this one person and, you know, DSEC wants to actually learn about that directly. I mean, they would like to have a phone number that they can access, they would like to have an email address that they can access, not come through filters to them, which make it subject to, you know, is the appropriate information actually coming to that committee? So, and, and from the public point of view, they want one number. We don't want to have a number for Republic, we don't want to have a contact form for DEQ plus a phone number for the county. You know, which one do we call, who's going to inform what, who really needs to know? You know, in the end, it's really Republic that needs to know about what's going on. But of course, DEQ wants to know, Republic, what are you doing about it? So this is one way to really get all of those comments together. And if it's combined with an email address, then it would be both written and spoken comments. And then I think we would get a better picture on kind of what exactly is going on with the landfill, because I think the public is a little frustrated with phone numbers that appear and disappear, you know, et cetera.
Inconsistency is always hard, so.
Yeah, indeed, it kind of makes people give up. So I think we'd get a more accurate picture.
May I add one more thing? The advantage of having the number at the county is that then we know that a comment or complaint has been filed rather than, you know, because in a lot of times in our experience, information that would go directly to Republic Services would go no further. And so if it starts here and then we give it to Republic Services and DEQ, we know that we've gotten all the information.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Okay, so next, you got, you mentioned the fires and I know that's been a concern up till now. I will note that we did ask Republic Services if they could enact some kind of monitoring program, you know, infrared or otherwise. And one gentleman said they were looking into it, but we haven't heard back. So anyway, I think that is something that we, I don't know that we have the legal authority to force them to do it, but it is something that as a board, we express support for. So.
We can keep asking, that's, you know, that's what we can do.
Yeah, and I just, you know, we, we, like I said, we don't, we have very limited authority over Republic Services, so the fact that the community is coming together and saying, hey, this is really important, that helps us. Like you said, we all want to be on the same team, like you guys are doing, I think you're doing a good job, keep it up, you know, telling Republic Services this stuff, we can tell them and hopefully, you know, if they get enough pressure, then they'll actually start doing it.
That's, that's one of the things that I wanted to point out. Commissioner Malone, you mentioned, what, five years ago, you had talked to Republic Services about construction? And this is our experience is that Republic Services will say, we'll get to that, you know, we're working on it, we'll do that. But do they ever follow through, you know, five years later? These kinds of things, we just have grown to not trust them at their word.
And I can say that, you know, when it comes to the flares, for instance, I understand that the shields have now been deployed, so finally. With the C and D, construction and demolition waste, Republic actually did do some research and put together some preliminary, you know, conceptual design for what that would look like. And their biggest challenge was trying to fit it on the site in terms of the space requirements and vehicular traffic and separating that from the landfill traffic. And, you know, now that we are where we are and have seen expansion proposals, obviously anything that they would have built for C and D separation would have conflicted with what they want to do for expansion. So that, you know, that's, but it is their decision as a private corporation in terms of how So that, you know, that's, but it is their decision as a private corporation in terms of how they manage their business. So we asked repeatedly over time about that C and D capacity. And I think, again, we just have to keep asking. And I think that we're going to have a lot better luck trying to push something regional than trying to do it all here because we can't do it all here. It just won't work. And most of that construction and demolition waste is not coming from Benton County. It's coming from those other sources. So we need to make sure that there are those source separation sites and facilities in Marion County, in, you know, Polk, maybe, wherever it's coming from. Lynn?
So I had one more comment just on the fire issue. I've just been doing some reading lately about what landfill fires are like, you know, as, as both a firefighter's challenge and also what happens to the surrounding community when those fires are going on. And one of the things is, of course, is that they can be very hard to extinguish. So they burn for weeks, months, or years, depending on what, what exactly is happening at the landfill. And, you know, it requires, there are, of course, tremendous impacts because there's a lot of burning plastic and other things in the landfill, which, you know, stretch for quite a ways and affect quite a bit of the community. So, so, you know, we don't know exactly what the, the legal options that you have are. And we really see it as our job to bring you, you know, this problem and perspectives on this problem because we've just never really heard about this before, about the particular problems that a landfill poses, you know, a particular risk that it poses, you know, to the wider community. You know, I don't think that Corvallis would be very happy if day after day, there was just the smell of burning plastic, you know, coming into. And who puts that fire out? You know, I mean, all the resources that are called for, there's, there's a tremendous monetary risk as well. But I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but I just want to kind of follow up with that, that, you know, it seems like there is something legal that can be done to exercise due diligence on the part of a landowner when the potential impact is so huge.
And early detection of those fires is the absolute key to preventing catastrophic results. So catching a fire 20 minutes into it versus two or three hours. If some of those fires had been at night during heavy cloud cover, those motorists wouldn't have seen it for many more hours. And then we have a much higher risk of catastrophe, potentially having to evacuate all of the Dare Village and the other residents that live there if we do have those very toxic plumes like we're seeing out of Georgia and the plant that's continuing to burn there.
Or a landfill fire that catches the forests nearby on fire or vice versa, wildfire catching the landfill on fire.
Okay, and I did also ask them if they, the folks from Republic, if they had a way of, you know, reaching out to surrounding neighbors and notifying them that an incident had occurred. And again, that's one thing I can't force them to do, but, you know, I did, we did ask them if they could do something like that. Let's see. So the, oh, the leachate into the Lamont, somebody mentioned that that's changing. Is that, I have not heard that.
Or Carvallo City Council meeting yesterday, today, last night, that they had, Republic reported that they would stop disposing of leachate at the Carvallo landfill or at the Carvallo wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, by the end of 2025. There was no plan given as to where it would go. And there was no, there was a promise that it would end at the end of 25. But again, this has been the history. They say they may do something, great timing, right before the elections, great timing, before the expansion proposal comes back on board. What are their plans? Like to see an actual written plan of how that's going to happen, where it's going to go. So we, we don't want it, like, we are accused all the time of NIMBY, not in my backyard. Great, well, if we take that leachate and just send it to another town, are they being made aware of what that is? And before they accept that plan? Or may they realize it at some point during that plan and then stop that ability for leachate to come? And now it stays here? So they have brought up the idea. It would be great to see a really fleshed out plan that we know that will actually go through.
Thank you. And then I guess, so you brought up the enforcement of the tonnage cap. And I don't know if staff has a answer now or if this can be a discussion for a future meeting, which, by the way, at the end, I am going to ask for a further discussion at a future meeting. But what, what is our penalty for going over the tonnage cap? Do we have an answer of that right now or can we talk about that at another meeting? Okay.
I would also think that we would want them to alert us when they're getting disaster debris so that they, we know in, at the time that that's what's happening. So not just after the fact. The other, I want to mention with the closure of River Bend, we knew that was happening. But at the time, given the, I think, the regulatory uncertainty over the future of River Bend, it was just for this year, just for this year. And so that happened for a couple of years and then it became a permanent component of the waste stream going to Coffin Butte. So that's a lesson. And I, I agree, we need to be a little bit more aware of those kinds of dynamics and that what can happen once often becomes a pattern.
I would expect with the way that they digitally track tonnage coming in daily, that that would be easy to put together a 306 day Excel spreadsheet that shows that day, every day that it's open and the tonnage that came in, perhaps by county, Benton versus other. And we start to see those costs that are being passed on to the Benton County residents, the environmental fees that are not supposed to be there, the additional costs, and get clarification as to where the profit is coming from? Is it coming from Benton County, from these other counties, especially moving forward to the SMMP? Perhaps that's, it would be great data points for that committee.
And there was something mentioned about the 2017 incident. And I wasn't a commissioner then, but I feel like I remember something about that. And I thought it was one time or wasn't there a fee that helped fund the criminal justice assessment?
It was, it was an unexpected volume of trash. We used those monies, their general fund dollars, for other purposes.
Okay.
Yes, but it was not intended to, you know, we did not make a decision to accept, not just, it wasn't Yamal County's trash, it was Washington County's trash that had been going to River Bend that ended up coming to Coffin Butte. It was an unexpected windfall of time, which again, became baseline. So.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I guess that's just to say, you know, it's not like the county is out there saying, yes, please give us more trash because we want to make more money. That's not, and, and people do, people do mention that, well, it's a revenue for you guys. It goes to the general fund. And that is true, but, you know, $3 million with a $400 million budget. For me personally, that's not that much and it's not worth it. So that is not a motivating factor for me.
So if I can just clarify, I mean, in the, in 2017, when you started, when Coffin Butte started receiving more, when it went over essentially the limit that had been set in the 20, in the 2000 franchise agreement? I mean, there was indeed a defined thing that was supposed to happen, where there's a reassessment of the situation. And it's to, as, as far as we can tell, you know, nothing like that ever happened. And I kind of understand if it's just like, well, if it's a temporary thing, we don't necessarily want to go into it. But, and I can understand that maybe it's lessons learned. What I'm saying is that I think we, we would like for the county to be a little more on Republic and not kind of go, oh, well, it's just this year, you know, or whatever. I think a little more skepticism, maybe a lot more skepticism about what the representations are would really serve us well going forward.
Thank you. Can we, is it possible to get the screen back with the list of kind of action items, please? And while we are doing that, I'll just put in a plug too. I don't know if anyone was able to watch the webinar for yesterday's Sustainable Materials Management Plan kickoff meeting. It was very long, but it's, it's recorded and I don't know if it's on our website yet, but hopefully it'll be on our website tomorrow. Yep, I get a thumbs up from Sean.
Where on the website will it be?
It will, TBA, Sean has a plan. I see that.
Okay, because a lot of times we hear of things on the website that we know are there, but we can't find them.
I've, I have experienced that as well, so I apologize for that. Anyway, there were, there's a lot of great conversation there. And in fact, a lot of examples that you brought up today were things that were discussed yesterday. So I think that's good. That's, I feel good about that process. Okay, there's the list, thank you. So I just, I guess I would like to request at a, maybe a future goal setting meeting, I'm not sure what's on the agenda for the next one, but if we could just discuss some of these. Because, you know, right now we're running out of time and we haven't, we haven't had, you know, staff's ability to discuss these at length. So I just want to see what staff or the chair thinks about that.
Absolutely, not an issue. We will get it on an agenda. I think that as, as a short timer, I also have to put in a disclaimer that some of these things are going to have to be re-discussed beginning in January, moving forward. So we will do what we can, immediate actions now, but some of it is going to be contingent upon new representation. As I look at Gabe in the back.
Well, we can.
If I, if I could, I just wanted to answer Commissioner Ojro. You questioned the methane figures that were presented. And, and it's very, and we certainly welcome those questions because of course, we're, we don't necessarily, maybe I'm just speaking for myself when I say my mathematical skills are not necessarily the best. But one of the action items that's not represented here is for Benton County staff to kind of start producing graphs like this on their own. But, but the, the core of that graph is when Carbon Mapper flew over Coffin Butte landfill, it was emitting 1.2 metric tons of methane every hour. And so they quantified that plume and there were, they identified four leaks. They quantified that for that period of time when they were actually studying, you know, Coffin Butte landfill. Then there was test flights, they stopped doing that, et cetera. But that, you know, methane being a very damaging greenhouse gas, that's the equivalent of, you know, 84 tons of carbon dioxide being emitted. And so it's the pernicious nature of methane that really makes that, that difference happen. So, but, so that's where the figure came from. But I'm happy, I think Phoenix is happy, you know, to engage in conversations about what really is going on. That's really something that's kind of at the heart of the research that we do is what is the truth of the situation? You know, isn't there more that we can know about what's going on? You know, especially when we're talking about assessing the environmental impacts, the environmental costs and the costs over time of the landfill. You know, we feel that these, getting to better numbers about all those things is really very important.
Yes, and I understand that probably you all have been working with Senator Gelsner Blue into a submit, a proposal for better DEQ mapping and using drone capabilities to do so, to map methane emissions. That's fantastic. And I know that the federal level, both the Biden administration and Congress, our delegation anyway, are very focused on having better methane data. So I think that, again, this is a fertile area for ongoing conversation and, and work. Unless we know what we're dealing with, it's very hard to deal with it.
Yeah, I'll also just mention that in a couple of days, EPA is convening a meeting where they're looking at adopting technologies like Carbon Mapper officially into their assessment of climate damage, you know, from landfills and from other sources. So we're just interested in seeing what the outcome of that is. It could be very, very much a step forward if the federal government is also helping, you know, to quantify these damages.
Absolutely. Okay, I would like to just give folks opportunity to close and then we will move on. Wanting to make sure I honor Commissioner Malone's need to leave. We do have an executive session still ahead of us.
We, we value your leadership. We've put you in places of leadership because we trust you to take care of the people that you represent here in the county. Republic's choice to not separate the items for construction, as we talked about five years ago, has caused this self-made need to expand. Will an expansion finally, will that giving them an expansion give them motivation to separate or not give them motivation? You've mentioned today that Benton County as a whole doesn't seem to have the clout to be able to hold over Republic enough clout to make them change. Perhaps the SMMP process will. So we want to encourage whatever we can do to help support you and your leadership to give you that clout. Maybe one of those steps might be to see what we can do legally to prevent that expansion until the SMMP process is complete, till we have a known path that we would like to take forward. And if we give them the expansion before that, we may lose even more clout. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
The, yeah, the only other thing I was going to say is about the, the landfill expansion, which Commissioner Ojro touched on already, which as we all know, there's not one before us now. Public Services may submit another one at some point. It is, it's a, we sit on that as in our quasi judicial role and it is held by land, by Oregon land use laws. And so, you know, we've had a lot of people say, like, how would you vote? We want to know that you wouldn't vote to expand it. And unfortunately, none of us can say ahead of time how we would vote on a land use hearing. That would be illegal. We would be displaying bias and therefore we would have to recuse ourselves from the decision. So as much as counterintuitive as it seems, you know, people want to know how we think or what we're going to do. In order to do our job properly, we actually can't do that. So that's just been a common misconception. I know most, a lot of you at that table probably know that, but it's just been a common misconception that I've been hearing a lot lately. So once again, thank you all for your time and your energy.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this point, we have approval of our meeting minutes from the July 16, 2024 board meeting.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. And I am going to skip the information sharing section and we are going to just move into executive session. So we will take a break as the room clears and we will then reconvene under executive session. ORS 192.6602D.